Uh, seven o'clock, seven o'clock.
Is it late? Okay, good evening, oh, I do this, okay? Good evening, everybody, it's seven o'clock. I'd like to call this order, a call to order the planning commission meeting of January eleventh twenty twenty-four, and ask you to please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance. You put your right hand over your heart and repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. Okay, uh, Ms. McGonaghy, is there any changes to our agenda?
No.
Thank you. Um, well, it brings us to item four, public comments on non-agenda items. If anybody's here to speak on a non-agenda items.
Uh, Chair.
Yes.
Roll call.
Oh, did I? Sorry about that. Number three, roll call, okay.
Chair Henderson.
Here.
Vice Chair Elise.
Here.
Commissioners Luhan.
Here.
And Olivares. We have a forum.
Okay, damn, just jumping too, too fast. Okay, item number four, public comments. For our non-agenda items, if anybody's here to speak on any non-agenda items, please come up and speak. You'll have three minutes. Do we have any, honey, any speaker cards?
No speaker cards.
Okay, then we'll close the public comments and move to item number five. Okay, and I, please get a motion to waive the full reading of all resolutions and ordinances on the agenda for this meeting. Okay, I have a motion from Mr. Olivares. I have a second.
Second.
Okay, a second from Vice Chair Elise. Did you press your motion? And your second? Oh, there we go, okay, little bit of a delay. All right, let's show your vote. Let the record show, motion passes, four votes. Okay, so that is, we're on to number six. Well, no, six was the consent calendar, right? So, number seven is, um, brings us public hearings, item seven A, which I believe is continued. Do we need to make a motion to continue that, or?
So I'll go ahead and give a brief update. Item seven A is a recommendation to continue the item to February eighth. The applicant needs additional time to answer, um, questions that were raised during the environmental review period.
Okay, so then we just, we just say it's gonna be continued to February eighth, there's nothing else to be done, okay. That brings us to item seven B, which was listed as Assistant Planner Jasmine Almora, but is that going to be handled by planning manager? Okay.
All right, good evening, the item behind, before you today is Comprehensive Development Plan twenty-three dash zero 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 three. It's a request to amend the existing language within the Animal Valley Auto Center specific plan to be consistent with the Palmdale Municipal Code. The specific plan was adopted on February ninth nineteen eighty-nine to guide the development of the Animal Valley Auto Center, also known as the auto, Palmdale Auto Mall. It's designed to accommodate up to fifteen auto dealerships, and it's bounded by Techno- Technology Drive to the north, State Route fourteen to the east, Avenue Q to the south, and Fifth Street West to the west. The, so as you recall, we went through the general plan amendment last year to update our, our city's general plan, and following that, we had a comprehensive zone update, a zone code update. So, this project proposes that we go ahead and update any of those references that reference the old general plan and the old zoning code. So, this is to correct any of those references. With that, staff recommends adoption of resolution number PC twenty-two four dash zero zero two, recommending city council approval of Comprehensive Development Plan twenty-three dash zero zero three, zero 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 three, and finding that the request is exempt from environmental review.
Okay, uh, if there, are there any technical questions from the commissioners for staff? Yes, no? Okay, um, and there's nobody here to speak on it, because it's actual staff. Does somebody like to make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion. Eighteen seventy-eight.
No, it's seven B.
We're on seven B.
I'd like to make a motion to approve resolution number PC dash two zero two four dash zero zero two.
We have a second? A sec, okay, so we have a motion from Vice Chair Elise and a second from, uh, from Commissioner Olivares. Please show your vote. Did you press second? Yeah, okay. Motion and second, there we go.
Mine's not working.
Let the motion, let the record show, motion passes with four yes votes. Okay, on to item seven C, which, uh, with planning manager, Brandon McGonaghy.
So, the item before you is general plan amendment, zone change, specific plan amendment, to amend the auto mall specific plan, to amend the, um, boundary of the specific plan to exclude seven parcels, which equals about twenty acres located on northwest and northeast corners of West Avenue Q and Carriage Way. Um, I'm gonna go ahead and pull up this screen here. Uh, I know that we all got a little bit of background with the previous, um, application, so I'll go ahead and jump right into it here. Uh, the request is to change the zoning designation for the seven parcels here, the vacant ones at the bottom there, um, to regional commercial. The reason that staff is recommending denial of this application is that the regional commercial general plan land use and zoning designation is intended to accommodate commercial and retail services, um, and this is more for a regional market area. Regional commercial areas provide access to long-term goods and services such as big box retailers. The auto mall is the only location throughout the city that allows the commercial sales of automobiles, and removing the seven parcels from the specific plan would prevent the expansion of the Palmdale Auto Mall if a new dealership wants to come and locate in Palmdale. The area is currently able to support commercial retail uses to the west and to the south of the specific plan. Furthermore, no development is proposed in conjunction with this request. So, the specific plan twenty-two dash zero zero one modifies the S, the specific pound boundary along the southern eastern portion of the specific plan for the removal of seven parcels. The general plan amendment and the zone change is a request to amend the general plan and land use designation and zone of the seven parcels from specific plan to regional commercial. The proposed amendment would permit all uses allowed within their regional commercial zone. So you'll see here, that would be those seven parcels there. Staff's recommendation is to adopt resolution number PC twenty-two four dash zero zero one, denying general plan amendment twenty-three dash zero 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 one, zone change twenty-three dash zero zero two, and specific plan amendment twenty-two dash zero zero one, and find that the requests are exempt from environmental review. Staff is available for any questions.
Okay, thank you very much, Ms. McGonaghy. Do the commissioners have any technical questions for staff at this time? No? If there are no technical questions from the commissioners, I'll open the public hearing on this item. If you are here to speak on the item, please come forward, state your name, and you'll have three minutes to speak. We will take notes while you speak and answer any questions once you've finished your three minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
This here on behalf of, um, LDA and the applicant. Um, our request today is to make economical, economic viable use of the property. Currently, uh, the property is within a specific plan, and the only, the only use that we can make of this property is with automobile dealerships. This property was, um, put into a specific plan for an auto center nineteen ninety. Since that time, there have been, there's, I think there's been one additional, um, dealership that's come since, since the original, um, specific plan was adopted, and these, um, automobile dealerships were, were located on the property. The property's been marketed for over seven years. We can't get an automobile dealership there, and there's several reasons why, which, which I'll explain to you. Boston Consulting, um, has, has, um, written in articles, several articles, and they've indicated that currently consumers research online. Automobiles are delivered to, uh, consumers, and there's, um, quite a bit of, uh, electrical vehicles being sold, which are also sold on, online and delivered to, to property owners. I'm not, I'm not new to a, to an auto center. I, I was the, um, attorney who approved the, or was able to obtain approval of the Salinas Auto Center, and it had two phases. Salinas is approximately the same size as Palmdale, hundred thirty-five thousand people. Palmdale has a hundred thirty-two thousand people. It had phase one and phase two. Phase one was occupied by approximately eight, eight dealerships. Phase two, they couldn't get dealerships, so it became retail. This property has been marketed by, um, our realtor, Renaissance's realtor. Automobile dealerships aren't, aren't gonna buy the property. We, we just, we can't get any, we can't get anybody to buy the property that wants to put an automobile dealership there. Brenda is correct that, um, regional commercial currently does not allow new dealerships, but she certainly can't amend her plan, and we, we would be happy to go back and amend our application to allow automobile dealerships in, in regional commercial. Automobile, automobile dealerships are being sold online. I mean, automobiles are being sold online. They don't, they don't use, they don't, they don't need the, when I represented the auto, auto dealers in Salinas, their, their pitch was, we need as many automobiles that can be seen from the highway as possible. And that was, that was twenty years ago, and that, that's what, I'm sure twenty years ago, nineteen ninety, thirty years ago, this automobile dealership, all the, all the dealerships wanted the visibility from the highway, and they got it. But that's not the way vehicles are sold today. I moved here from, from Phoenix, Arizona, and I shared a conversation with an engineer from, from, um, England, who was here during the pandemic, and his family couldn't come here, and he told me about this, this, uh, business that he was, um, getting into, that had a trillion dollars behind it, and he, and he's told me that pretty soon we're gonna have a subscription to a car that's driverless, and you're gonna be able to buy the subscription, use your phone to call, to call on your ride, and they're gonna be, drop you off, you're not gonna have to park. And, and I, and I said, that, that sounds great, but it sounds like a, kind of a fairy tale. And he said, well, it's, it's called Waymo, you should look us up. That was, that was three years ago, and if you go, if you go to Phoenix today and you drive on the streets, you, you can't miss the Waymo vehicles, they're everywhere. That, that, that's, they started, they started testing in Arizona, in Tucson, and now they're actually giving rides in the metropolitan area of Phoenix to, to users through Uber. Um, his, he said the biggest issue was the social impact that was gonna, that, that was, was going to occur in, in, in the automobile industry. You're gonna lose several millions of jobs because basically it's gonna put the automobile industry out of business. So what I'm saying today is, we're just asking for economic viable use of the property. We can't sell the property. This, this property is basically valueless, because the automobile dealerships aren't gonna come here. And pretty soon this automobile, this, this auto dealer, uh, auto mall may, may extinguish themselves. People are buying on, online, uh, the, 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 um, electric vehicles don't require maintenance, so you don't need the, you don't need the maintenance facilities that come along with, with, with these, um, automobile dealerships. You don't, you don't need the visibility from the highway, because our, our millennials that are so computer savvy are doing the research online. They're picking their vehicles out before they go to the, they don't need to go to a dealership and look at a bunch of cars. They've done, they've done the research online. They, they, they know how to pay online, they're buying online, and the cars are being delivered to their house. So we, we def, we, you know, we, we understand the concerns you have with respect to losing the ability to have an auto dealer come in, because it's big revenue for the city. But if you leave these parcels vacant, you're gonna get no revenue at all, because their automobile dealerships aren't coming here. They're not gonna come on these three parcels. But if we can have some type of retail use on here, we can bring you some revenue. And, and that, that's what we're trying to do. We're not, we're not trying to kill the auto center at, at all. And we'd be happy to come back and amend our application to allow, to, to, to allow automobile dealerships in a regional commercial zone. I, I think that's a wise decision, whether we, whether we make that proposal, or whether staff makes a proposal, because there's other, there's other sites within the city that are zone regional commercial, or some other commercial zone, where you can have a, a brick and mortar building, which, which has, um, the ability to take in clients, order online, and deliver to their house. You still get, I'm sure there's a way that you can get the, the retail tax from that. We don't wanna kill the auto center, we just wanna make economical viable use of our property. And without this, without this change, we can't do it. So, so our request is to, is to please consider allowing us to change the zone on this property.
Okay, thank you. Any of the commissioners have?
One, one last thing is, uh, we, we've got a map of, of the auto center and the vacant lots that'll, that'll, that exist today and will remain. So even if, even if you were to approve, approve our application for the rezone, there, there are still a few vacant lots where, where if, in the unlikely event a large automobile dealership wants to relocate, they can still do it there.
Got it, okay.
So, and with the Salinas Auto Center, um, on the second phase, they couldn't, they couldn't do the, the automobile dealerships because there was no interest. That was twenty years ago. Today, today, the, the, the method and mode of buying automobiles is different, so it exacerbates our issue. So, we, we, um, we just, we request that you, that you, that you return to, have staff return to make findings to rezone the property.
So do you have a project in mind for the property?
Well, the problem is, is when we, when, when we go to market the property and somebody calls and they say, hey, we, we wanna do, we wanna do a hotel here, well, we can't do, we can only do automobile dealerships. And, well, otherwise, we have to do a general plan amendment and a zone change, and they, well, that's, that's gonna cost us half a million dollars in, in fees to, to get that together, and we don't have it, we don't have a guarantee that we're gonna get approved, because the zone's wrong. So we're, 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 we're trying to put ourselves in a position where we can sell the property to a buyer who wants to build a retail structure that'll bring in revenue to the city.
And how, so the, the owner of the property is Renaissance Holdings?
Renaissance Holdings and, um, LDA is, uh, land developer and associates, owns, uh, seven acres to the three parcels that are immediately south and adjacent to Auto Center Drive, and I guess that would be west of Carriage.
And how long have they owned it?
They've owned it for three years, and I think Renaissance has owned it for seven.
Seven, and, um...
The whole time we've owned it, we've marketed it and tried to get dealerships to come. We would love to have a dealership come, I mean, we would be, that's something we would, we would, you know, we're not gonna turn down good money.
Right, right.
But we can't get it, and so we can't make any economical, any economic viable use of the property, none.
Gotcha. Do any of the other commissioners have questions for the applicant?
So when was, when was the last time a dealership came in, like, I forgot to?
I, 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 I know that it was shortly after nineteen ninety, I can't tell you exactly when, but it's been about thirty years.
Okay, are there any other, um, speakers to speak on the project?
We have Bob Robertson.
Dear Chairman Henderson, um, talking to you today about the matter seven C. Um, first, please, allow me to introduce myself. Uh, myself and my family's background related to the automotive industry. Um, we've been in the industry for over fifty years. We first built our first dealership in North Hollywood in nineteen seventy-one. Then in the early nineties, we opened the first Honda dealership in the Palmdale Auto Mall, where I remained the owner of that business and of the property until recent years. I still maintain ownership of the land. Um, I've seen the decline and changes that have happened in the auto industry, and as a prudent businessman, I felt the need, uh, but I really had little choice, but to sell the business, I still own the property itself. Excuse me here, I'm a little nervous. Um, I've noticed a paradigm shift as internal combustion engines have now switched over to EVs. Electric vehicles are sold directly to the consumer. There's really little need to come to the dealership anymore. Um, in the meantime, over the past several years, I've enlisted the services of a very capable broker, who has done his due diligence as far as the property and looking for prospective buyers. Unfortunately, due to the nature of the changes in the industry, there are no interested automobile dealerships, interested in company the auto mall any longer. Uh, there's many reasons for this, um, such as really the birth of the electric car. Um, they don't require as much maintenance, the buyers of the vehicles have changed the ways that they're buying. Um, they're traveling the internet highway to find their next set of wheels, not the actual highway. There's no longer need to go to the dealership in the traditional sense. As consumers and as business owners, we need to move with the times, and the times, they are changing. We have to be prepared to infuse new methods and strategies into how our city planning is done in order to keep from continually the stra, excuse me, the stagnation that is occurring in the properties such as these. No one wants to engage in a lengthy process of trying to change the zoning when they can easily go somewhere else, where it has already been done, thus they aren't losing any valuable time or money in the interim. We have had such buyers approach us, but as soon as they realize that the current auto mall specification plan will not allow any other type of business, they quickly move away in the opposite direction. This is why I'm writing to you, asking for a sincere consideration to the proposed amendment of the zoning to regional commercial. I have the support of the landowners to the west and most of my former fellow dealership owners. This would spur a long-term awaited economic development by creating lucrative jobs for people who would continue to invest in our city. It becomes a win-win for all.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
And we appreciate the many years, I mean, Robertson's Palmdale Honda is like an institution in our town. I mean, I wish you were still here, I didn't realize you were gone.
Yeah, we spend most of our time delivering cars now.
Really?
Yeah.
Wow. I have, I have a question for you. Yes, sir. Um, I, I read an article today, um, about Hertz selling like twenty thousand EVs that they previously bought. I guess they were planned to buy like a hundred thousand Teslas or something of that. And do you, do you guys see that change in, in EVs? I mean?
Yes, uh, our high sellers are gonna be, they're always our hybrids and our EVs. We have a new Pro lot coming out soon. We have pre-orders for them already lined up. Um, it's the future.
But do you see that? I mean, like, Hertz, they, the practicality with them renting cars and, and selling off all those EVs and stuff, you know, at twenty thousand, I think, I think I read under articles, like, twenty thousand dollars for a Model Three or something.
The ones that are in recall?
No, the ones that are, that they're selling, that they, that didn't work for them, they didn't find it practical.
I don't understand your question.
My question is, do you see that in, in the industry? As EVs, um, people were turning them back or?
Oh, they're just, yeah.
Yeah, losing, losing favor.
I really think that a future in my mind is gonna be EV and it's gonna be hybrid, just the gas mileage alone. That's what it is, we just gotta work out the systems. Thank you.
Okay, we have any, thank you. Are you, you guys still have the dealership in North Hollywood? Oh, man. Okay, our next speaker?
Philip Terry.
Good evening, good evening, Chairman Henderson. Commissioners, um, my name's Philip Cherry, I'm with Keller Williams. Um, I'm the, the broker that's been trying to sell these properties to dealerships for the last seven years. Unfortunately, and I've direct marketed, you know, targeting, knowing that the specific plan only allows dealerships or associated, uh, auto-related. Really, it, it needs to be dealership, it, it needs to be a dealership, but what I've done is targeted everyone. I mean, every brand you can think of, we've tried. I, up until two months ago, I was trying a Vietnamese brand, uh, Vin that's coming out.
Oh, I saw that, at the auto show.
They said they wanted to do dealerships, so I called them, didn't work out. What, um, what's been happening is that most of the interest has been in the regional commercial space. People have come in and said, hey, can we do this? Can we do a movie theater there? Can we do this? I have, uh, a client of mine, uh, uh, Elise Maha, uh, who owns the Grommich Chinese Theater. He has something he calls the Cube, that he does, uh, Sugar Factory, which he owns, uh, Wild and Out, um, and then, uh, it's a club, and then he also has, um, uh, the, a miniature Grommich Chinese Theater. And he wanted to come up here and put that up here, and he was targeting, actually, uh, Mr. LDA's, uh, property, the seven acres there, to do that. Uh, but it was too heavy a lift, he said, mm, you know, trying to change the zoning to, do, do all of the things that needed to be done, he kinda said, Adam, I don't wanna do that. So, we can have entertainment, we can have some theater, something there that will bring traffic. I've met with all the dealerships, everybody has agreed, this is a good change. The boundary change was good. The only one that was against it was, was Gus Camacho. And from what I understand, Gus is, I just found out today, he's selling his Mitsubishi building. So I think he's gonna consolidate. He's been having a, a pretty rough, rough couple of years over there. So, him putting that up for sale, that's another space for another dealership. If someone wants to come, I wanna see what dealership he's gonna sell that to, 'cause I can't sell them to anyone for seven years diligently trying to target every brand. And we, you know, we had BMW at one point, they're gone, there's been a few that have left.
Are you talking about the one from the nineties?
Yeah.
Grumble.
There, yeah, there's, there, you know, it just isn't happening, it's not happening, it's a, it's a shame. But there's eight, there's still a few more spaces, I think it, uh, general commercial.
Ooh, that's noisy, that's noisy.
That thing is loud now, did that change?
We have Daniel Singh next.
Okay, it isn't, I think, I think they brought that in for the council meetings. They, they don't need that. They can turn the volume down for the planning commission.
Good evening, Commissioners. Uh, Daniel Singh, I'm a principal of LDA, which owns, uh, the seven acres. Uh, I, I don't wanna go over everything again, but I think pretty much everything's been said. Every time we, we get a monthly update to try and develop the property, generally, uh, we're getting people, uh, I think one time, the hospital, uh, people reached out to us to try and do, uh, uh, some semi-acute place there. Uh, as he said, uh, the Chinese Man Grand Theater, we met with that guy on Hollywood Boulevard, Atis Theater. Everybody who's approached us is non-dealer ship. We've, uh, marketed the property, uh, Robinson's marketed his property way longer than us for seven years. Uh, no car dealership has approached us, uh, to put the property there. Our CFO, his brother, owns three car dealerships, two in Riverside, one in Calabasas. We've approached him to try and do some kind of joint venture. He, that ain't happening. We're paying property taxes, we'd like to develop our property, but car dealerships are not coming to Palmdale.
Oh, somebody should've told Diamond that, then they just buy everything in town.
They have their questions.
Okay, do we have any more applicants?
There are no more speakers.
Okay, nobody online or on the telephone? Okay, if there are no objections, uh, I will close the public hearing on this item and, uh, ask for a motion. Or discussion, discussion or a motion?
I'd like to make a motion. I'd like to make a motion to adopt resolution PC twenty-two four dash zero zero one, denying general plan amendment twenty-three dash zero zero one, zoning change twenty-three dash zero zero two, and specific, uh, plan amendment twenty-two dash zero zero one.
We have a motion, um, from Commissioner Luhan, do we have a second? Okay, we have a second from Vice Chair Elise, please show your vote.
Waiting for one more vote?
Yes, or no, or whatever. Okay, that's interesting. Uh, looks like we have a tie. Okay, that's interesting. Uh, looks like we have a tie. Is that a tie?
Did you mean to abstain?
For this question, we'd like to discuss this more.
Okay, so let the record show, we have two yes.
So.
One no and one abstain? Pardon? Okay.
You have to make the motion again.
Okay, so we start again?
Um, I'd like to make a motion to adopt resolution P C twenty four, I'm sorry, twenty twenty four dash zero zero one uh, denying general plan amendment twenty three dash zero zero one, uh, zone change twenty three dash zero zero two, and specific plan amendment twenty two dash zero zero one.
Okay, we have a motion, and do we have a second? Do we have a motion from Commissioner Lu Han? A second from Vice Chair Elise? Okay, so push your buttons for your motion and your second. Do I need to reset my, how do we get back to, oh, there we go. Okay, please, um, show your vote. Okay, let the record show, um, motion passes with three yes votes, one where'd it go? One no vote? Oh, three yes and one no. Thank you very much. I think maybe if you bring a project, that would be helpful.
Uh, I just wanna go ahead and make sure that it's understood that the yes vote is to uphold the recommendation of denial.
Correct. Yep. Okay, so we're, we're on seven D uh, with Planning Manager Brenda Magania, request to modify existing language in the Palmdale municipal code?
Yes, so the item before you is general plan amendment twenty three dash zero 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 six, zoning ordinance amendment twenty three dash zero 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 four, and zone change twenty three dash zero 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 five. Uh, this is recommending city council approval of the the following project. The proposed project is a request to amend the noise element of the general plan. There is a policy in there related to, um, do, to projects when they're approved, needing to allocate an a, an aviation easement. And what we found is, we met with the representatives of Plant Forty Two to go ahead and discuss if this was a necessary, um, item to have in the general plan. It turns out that they're okay with us removing it because we did adopt the, um, and forgive me, this is a really long one. Um, the air insulation compatible use zone, and that's a plan that was adopted in two thousand and eleven to address any land issues or development standards around Plant Forty Two so that there are no discrepancies, and so height, sound, and, uh, land uses were all considered at that time, so we're gonna go ahead and remove that with this general plan amendment. Uh, the zoning ordinance amendment will clean up some language with the development standards for mixed-use zone related to lot design, density, and parking, and this is specifically to the mixed-use two and mixed-use three zones. And lastly, the amendment to the general plan land use map and the zoning map will correct a parcel that was zone neighborhood commercial and should be designated as utilities. In conclusion, uh, staff recommends that you adopt resolution P C twenty twenty four dash zero zero three, recommending the city council approval of this project.
Thank you very much, Ms. Magania.
I'm available for any questions.
Do the commissioners have any technical questions of staff at this time? If there are no technical questions from the commissioners, I'll open the public hearing. And then I will close the public hearing. Um, do the commissioners have any questions of staff? Okay, if there are no objections, I'll, I already closed the public hearing. Um, I'll ask for the motion. Okay, I have a motion from Commissioner Oliveris.
A second.
I have a second from Vice Chair Elise. Please show your vote. Ooh, that was fast. Let the record show, motion passes for, oh. Okay, that brings us to number eight, staff communications.
So as you all know, there was a newly appointed planning commissioner last night at the city council meeting. So they'll be, she'll be going through, uh, the background check, and then we'll go ahead and get her sworn in, and hopefully she'll be here with us at our next, uh, planning commission meeting. Her name is Ayesha Jones.
Okay. Um, any other staff communication? That's it. All right, and item number nine on the agenda is planning commissioner communications. Anybody have anything?
One thing, um, there is the academy coming up. What day is it? I think you sent something out.
March sixth to eighth.
March sixth to eighth. Okay, so, um, we sit in our information, um, you know, when we get back a, a response for, uh?
Yeah, we can go ahead and take that offline.
And then I have a question. Um, that project that we have by the mall, which is, um, across the street. Fifteenth Street West and Rancho List of Boulevard. What do we call it? Do we have a name for that project?
No. It, it's within the La Terra, um, plan development document.
Okay, so how is it coming? Is, are they gonna, is it gonna move forward? I mean, cuz we approved the alcohol license for the grocery store as if the grocery store was gonna be happening, but I haven't seen any movement.
So at this time, economic development is working on, um, filling those commercial spaces, and we are working on also uh, looking at the residential development as well, so, uh, it is moving. I don't have any official tenants at this time.
So will the grocery store build without tenants, or do they have to have a set of tenants before they'll start building the grocery store?
It's typically tenant-driven.
Gotcha. Okay. Alrighty, so then I guess that's it. No other planning commissioner communications. And, uh, we are adjourned to the February eighth, uh, planning commission meeting at seven P M. Thank you very much.